Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I appreciate how you everybody quieted down right at six o'clock. That's very impressive. Well done. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order Monday, November 8th, 2021. Thank you all for being here. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. Good to see so many people in the council chambers. I think this is the most we've had in close to two years. So glad to see you all here tonight. Thank you so very much. And thank you to everybody watching at home as well. We will get started tonight with a roll call. I know that Councilmember Martin is out of town, will not be joining us. And just for everybody's information, the city manager, Mr. Verbrugge, is going to be joining us remotely from home as well. So just so we all are clear on that. So for the roll call, Mr. Brillert. Baloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Bussie. Present. We have six of the seven Bloomington City Council members in attendance this evening. Next up is our approval of agenda. Council, do we have any additions, subtractions, or changes to the agenda this evening? Anything? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lowman to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion. Mr. Brillert. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie. Aye. Motion carries six zero. We've got an agenda. Next on our agenda is item four, which is our public comment period. And our public comment period is a 20-minute period at each council meeting where we allow members of the public to come forward and address the public, or excuse me, address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda. And we do limit it to 20 minutes. It's not a back and forth and so on. It's just an opportunity for the council to listen. We break into two different pieces here. Item 4.1, which is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. That's where we will start. Mr. Verbrugge, item 4.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. No response necessary to the previous meeting, not much public comment. Seeking clarification. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 4.2, which is our public comment period. As I said, each speaker limited to five minutes. It's not laid out as a back and forth. It's an opportunity for us to listen. We'll clarify any questions of fact or specifics, but otherwise, it's an opportunity for the council to listen and take input from members of the public. We did have one person call ahead and reserve time. Ms. Ness, good evening and welcome.
Thank you. As I mentioned previously, officers met at my home, and first they mentioned the inaccurate report from 2018, then the accurate report from, well, my neighbor's driveway, then the inaccurate September 17th report. There's another inaccurate report from September 4th at 12:44 that the officers did not mention. The report states Ness continuing to tape children, just wanted to report that he's bothered by Sally. I did not continue to tape children. I was at the park earlier that morning. I text a neighbor, no students at park, and first thing is they all go on the playground equipment. I talked with a woman who did not know the park was for public use, but saw me and the grandchildren, so she came to use it. I took six pictures of the grandchildren at 9:55. I left the park when the students came out. I took a picture of the woman's van as we were leaving at 10:27, and so I would remember the conversation. The last report the detective asked about is September 23rd. Detective, what was your purpose for going over to the park that day? I replied, I wanted the attorney to observe the dangerous conditions for preschool children. I watched a three-year-old, a two-year-old, and two 18-month-old. I wanted him to specifically, see specifically when we got to the park, how the kids go on the equipment, which is needed to get their large muscle activity. And then when the students come out, how they get off the equipment, notice their demeanor, the fear that they have in them. Detective wants, so you wanted to bring your grandchildren over there and then have the Success Academy kids come out, and you wanted to document your children's fear? I replied, I wanted the attorney to see what happens. Detective, why would you bring your grandchildren over there if you're so afraid of these children? Attorney, don't answer the question. For information, I'm not afraid of the children. I am afraid of the younger children playing on the playground with older children. Detective, it makes no sense to me, does it make sense to you? No, not if you think it's unsafe and placing your grandchildren harms way. I mean, if you think it's unsafe. I guess I'd like to know why you would put them, if you think it's dangerous, why you would take them over there? For information, it is a public park, and asking why I take them there questions whether the detective recognizes that Smith Park is a public park and not owned by a private business. Additionally, the grandchildren would get off the equipment, so I did not put them in harms way. The following questions, my attorney said not to answer, and they are all inappropriate. Detective, do you have access to, are you handicapped at all? Detective, do you have access to your kids, to take your kids to any other parks in Bloomington? Detective, do you have access to bring the children over there at other times during the day? Detective, have you ever brought your children over there at other times during the day, or, I'm sorry, your grandchildren at other times during the day and when Success Academy kids have not been on the playground? Reminder to council, my attorney spoke at the city council meeting that same night, asking when the school uses the playground, and the city answered anytime, and yet a month later detectives are asking if I can use the public park at another time or go to another park. That should not happen. Detective, when the Success Academy kids went back into the school, did you continue to stay on the playground with your grandchildren? I replied, there be video, and I personally think we did stay. I am then asked if I videotaped or took photos. I did not. I did try to audio record the attorney speaking to other adults. Detective, have you been over to the park since the September 23rd? I reply, yes. Can you estimate how many times or at what times during the day? I replied, very seldom. Detective, did you go over and do any documenting on those days, on the very seldom days that you were over there? I reply, no. Detective, no? Okay. Did you go over there with your grandchildren? I replied, yes. Detective, playing on the playground? I replied, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Is there anyone else in the council chambers who wishes to speak at tonight's public comment period? Anyone? If not, Resi, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.2, the public comment period tonight?
No one asked a question, sir. Please continue.
Last call for anyone in the chambers. See, no one coming forward and no one on the phone. I will close tonight's public comment period. And we will move on to item five, which is our introductory items this evening. And our first introductory item, item 5.1, we have the honor and the pleasure of having with us this evening the Hennepin County District Court Chief Judge Todd Barnett, who is with us. I think for the first time here in Bloomington, very happy to have him here and very happy to welcome him and looking forward to your presentation, Chief Judge. Welcome. Thank you for being here and glad to have you.
Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate this opportunity to be before you and the council members today. My plan is to go over the one-page sheet that we provided earlier. I think it's going to be on the overhead. And just to give you a quick overview of Hennepin County Court and just to answer any questions that you might have. So I'm not sure if it's, but what I'll say is our mission in Hennepin County District Court.
Grant, if you could turn on the overhead, please. Oh, I'm sorry. It looks like he's, he's got the documents scanned in. Very good. Never mind.
All right. So our mission for our branch is to provide justice through a system that assures equal access for the fair and timely resolution of cases and controversies. You can imagine that because of the pandemic, that has been a little difficult at moments, but we are making it through. One thing you might not know is that we have 63 judges and 12 referees, but we have over 500 employees. One of the things that I say whenever I go out in public, I say, it takes over 500 people to make 63 judges and 12 referees look good. So it's a lot of work. We have five divisions in our court system, and I'll tell you a reason why I mention them, civil, criminal, family, juvenile, and probate mental health. As you could tell there in the red, based on all of our filings, the criminal division, of course, takes a lot of the bulk of our work. When you look at the total number of filings, more than 88% of our filings are in criminal court. Of course, our main building down at the government center, but we have four other locations at the downtown and two in the suburbs. One of the things that I wanted to really draw your attention to is that we summons over 30,000 members of the public to come to the government center to be jurors. It's a civic duty, but it's one in which we find a lot of people take very seriously, and they don't get paid a lot to do it. And it's important that you know a little bit about, about them and about what we do. It's very interesting. In 2020, during the pandemic, there were 300 requests for jury trials. When you look at 2019, we had 700 or more requests for jury trials, but we still summons over 30,000 jurors. The way that breaks down is that a little over 7,000 actually came down to court. So they appeared in the government center. About 5,000 or more actually went into a courtroom. And then when you look, about 3,000 of Hennepin County residents were, actually were sworn in and set for a trial. I think that's significant to the work that we do and the work that we ask citizens to do when they come down to the government center. One of the other things that I like to bring to your attention is that we, you might hear a lot about treatment courts, excuse me, and we have a DWI court, we have a drug court, we also have a veterans' court, and a mental health court. One of the things that's a challenge for us that I'll highlight very briefly, because it was a challenge when the pandemic occurred, and that was, we had to quickly go from being in person to going remote. And if you looked at our statistics and you look back prior to the pandemic, we were only having maybe most in a month, 50 remote hearings, and now we're in the thousands. If you look at just from January of this year to now, about 89% or so of all of our hearings are remote. What we found because of the pandemic is that remote hearings have some benefits, and they're here to stay. One of the things that we found out was that we've seen an increase in participation in all five of our divisions. So we see more people attend court. More relatives and friends have been able to attend these hearings because they're remote. People didn't have to come downtown to pay for parking. People didn't have to take off of work to come down and wait several hours for the hearing. They could stay at work and do it over lunch break. People didn't have to get daycare. They could stay home and attend their court hearing. We found that people who normally would come from out of state didn't have to pay for transportation to get here. They could do it remotely. One of the letters that I received that I was not thinking about as we went to remote hearings and not thinking of a benefit, but I got a, I think it was an email from a person that was disabled, physically disabled, and they were saying how much they enjoyed the fact they didn't have to navigate downtown in the government center to appear in court for a remote hearing. So there are some benefits to remote hearings that I wanted to share with you and just to let you know about those. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was just, when you look at the pandemic and you look at our backlog, when you look at the felonies and the gross misdemeanors, we're about 3,000 cases in our backlog. So the directive from Chief Judge Gildea is that we need to take care of that backlog by July of 2023. We will continue to work on the cases that we currently have, but we're going to have to about, I would say, every four months, clear about 600 cases. We cannot do that without the help of our justice partners. So I wanted to just talk briefly about your Bloomington prosecutors, just briefly here. Because they are in-house, it's been easier for us to be able to get more people on calendars, to be able to talk with them about changing things, and it's really been a benefit for us because a lot of our prosecutors are contracts through other cities, and they have other work to do. But with Bloomington, it's always been easy for us to work with them to make calendar changes. So I just wanted to say that, and if there's any questions, I will answer them to the best I can.
Thank you so very much, and thank you for your kind words about our, our legal staff. We think they're top-notch, so we're glad to hear others think that as well. Councilmember Nelson, I see you with your hand up. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I appreciate you coming and talking with us today. I have two questions. One, recently, the South Metro Court location was closed, which has had a negative impact on Bloomington, our prosecutors and things like that. And I heard you tonight, and I just want to clarify, there are two courts in Minneapolis and then two in the suburbs. Is that accurate?
No, there's, there's five locations downtown, and then there, so you have downtown, you have the government center, you have family justice, you have the juvenile center, you have what we call the public safety facility, and then we have City Hall, we had some, I think, conciliation court there. And then in the suburbs, we have Ridgedale and South, and Ridgedale and Brookdale.
And I guess one of my concerns is, you know, my understanding Minneapolis is about 400,000 people, the entirety of Hennepin County is about 1.2 million, and it seems like we're a little bit, at least from where I sit in Bloomington, a little over-focused with facilities serving Minneapolis, and it is causing some problems within our budgets and things like that to have to travel there, pay for parking, things of that. It is what it is right now. I just want, want you to be aware of that concern. One of the questions I have, and this is maybe just something I'll take offline with our city attorney and city manager, but with the increase in the virtual meetings, what type of budget impact is that having on our city because we maybe aren't having to commute downtown for some of those meetings or as many of them? And I guess from the Hennepin County's perspective, is that going well and something that's saving time and money for all of the communities that you serve?
I think that it's saving time and money for our court users. It actually is more labor-intensive for the court. If you can imagine that before, when you look at our misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor cases, right now remotely for an arraignment calendar, we're maxed out on the number of people we can process for remote hearings, but it's only about 40 or 50% of the people that we could be able to process if it was in person. It's labor-intensive because behind the scenes, and we use Zoom, so behind the scenes, you have several clerks working to put people in breakout rooms with their attorneys and then bring them back to court. You have interpreters that we, we have as well. So it's a lot of work for the court staff. We've been able to address or really starting to ramp up addressing the backlog because we have some additional funding to do that.
Thank you very much. That's interesting and enlightening, enlightening to hear what it's doing on the Hennepin County side. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So somewhat tied to that, do you plan in the future to continue with the, the virtual meetings, with the Zoom meetings? Is that a staple now of Hennepin County justice?
Yes. The, the short story, we have a judicial council for the whole court system. We met last month, I believe, is when we voted. We will continue with remote hearings. We have a framework for it. It's going to be basically looked at and evaluated before it's permanent, but if you can think of hearings that aren't contested, will more than likely be remote. So if you think of any hearing that is contested, you will be in person. So I won't go through the list of the cases, but so just think of it that way. Yep.
Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Really more so, I wanted to just say thank you for coming to give us an update, you know, regards to this. And if they ever do decide to do some expansion down in the southern part, I know my, my fellow councilmember Nelson really kind of spoke to that, and I'd, I'd love to see that. We talked about what you had brought forward with the equity piece, with the virtual piece. I know that location always helps with that. Thank you again.
Well, that decision is above my pay grade, so.
I understand that very well.
We, you know, we, if, if there's a facility that's built south, we will be there. So it's not a problem.
So I assume that this is one of many steps that you're making with city councils across, across Hennepin County, introducing yourself, the opportunity to get in front of people again and talk to folks, and so I, I wish you the best. I'm sure.
Well, thank you. Thanks a lot. We wanted to come here because Bloomington, I believe, is our second-largest city behind Minneapolis.
It is indeed.
And I thought it was important that we start here. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for making the trip. Appreciate it.
Yes, thanks.
We will move on. Council, our next three introductory items are three proclamations that I have, and so I'm going to head down to the podium to read the proclamations. As I said, we have three proclamations tonight, and our first proclamation is for Native American Heritage Month. And November has been designated Native American Heritage Month. It's a time to acknowledge and celebrate the history and the culture and the traditions of Native Americans, not only in Bloomington but across the country. And certainly, we have a large and rich history of Native American populations here in the city of Bloomington. So I do want to read this proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, month, November 2021. Whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their vibrant and diverse cultures, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history and present times of this country. And whereas, the city of Bloomington is built on lands once known by Native Americans as where the water touches the bluffs and where sacred burial mounds of the ones who came before us remain. And whereas, Native Americans have a long and rich history and presence in Bloomington, including Dakota, Ojibwe, and Iowa Indians, and we recognize the 11 tribal nations that call Minnesota home. And whereas, the Bloomington City Council resolves to support their legacy and preserve their sacred heritage for generations to come. And whereas, the Bloomington City Council includes equity and inclusion as one of its seven strategic priorities and strives to make continued and meaningful progress toward equity and inclusion for Native Americans. And whereas, the Bloomington City Council recommits to supporting Native Americans and working side by side with their leaders to secure stronger and safer communities. And whereas, during the month of November, we commemorate the rich and diverse culture of Native American people and recognize their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity of our society. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month, and the city of Bloomington dated this eighth day of November 2021. As I said, it's a, it is a month not only here in Bloomington but across the country, and I think it's an important one. And if we, I'd encourage people to spend time learning more about the history of the Native American people in the city of Bloomington, because as I said, it is a rich history. And there are indications of that all around us, and I encourage folks to, to get out and actually understand better and learn more about the, the Native American culture in Bloomington, because it is something, it is something, it's an important part of our history and an important part of our present and our future as well. Our second proclamation is a Veterans Day proclamation. Obviously, Thursday, November 11th, is Veterans Day in the United States, an opportunity to honor all members of our armed forces that have served this country in war and peace and both living and dead. And so very proud to read our Veterans Day proclamation this year. Veterans Day, November 11th, 2021. Whereas Veterans Day originated in the armistice of November 11th, 1918, which brought World War I to an end. And whereas, the purpose of Armistice Day was to honor the fallen soldiers of the Great War for their sacrifice and bravery. Seven years later, in 1926, Congress adopted a resolution requesting that President Calvin Coolidge issue annual proclamations on November 11th, making Armistice Day a legal holiday. And whereas, the United States Congress expanded the significance of November 11th in 1954, renaming Armistice Day as Veterans Day and dedicating it as a date to honor veterans of all wars, both living and dead. Whereas, there are more than 19 million veterans in the United States with nearly half over the age of 65. And whereas, approximately 320,000 military veterans call Minnesota home. And whereas, Veterans Day gives us an opportunity to pay respect to all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and the Coast Guard, both in times of war and times of peace. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in Bloomington, and encourage all Bloomington residents to recognize, honor, and thank the men and women who have bravely served in our armed forces. Signed this day, the 8th of November, 2021. I don't know anything more to add to that other than to say to all veterans, both here and, and watching, thank you so very much for your service. It is deeply and greatly appreciated. And our final proclamation is somewhat tied to that, actually. It is a proclamation regarding the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network. Now, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network, it's a, it's a statewide initiative that synchronizes community resources in support of veterans and the community and their families and so on. And we have had a Yellow Ribbon Network here in the city of Bloomington before. This is a bit of a, kind of a reboot or a reaffirmation of our commitment to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network. So what I would like to do, we've got a number of folks here, if you're watching at home, we've got a number of folks in the council chambers here tonight, and I'd like to welcome you, if you'd like to come up while I read the proclamation, and stand behind me, that would be, that would be fabulous. And then I'm going to ask Annette Kuiper from the Minnesota Department of Military Affairs to say a few words, but we're going to read the proclamation first. You can come out, come on around me. The camera's right, where did the camera go? The camera's right there. Very good. So proclamation for the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network, November 8th, 2021. Whereas, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is a nationally-recognized organization whose primary purpose is to provide support and advocacy for active-duty service members and their dependents and disabled and retired veterans of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, active and retired service people and their dependents in Bloomington are in need of a local chapter of Behind the Yellow Ribbon to provide the necessary programs for community support, training, services, and resources. for community support, training, services, and resources. And whereas, the Bloomington Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Steering Committee researched, compiled, and submitted a comprehensive action plan describing available resources, plans, and goals for a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group to serve locally, which included plans to work with educational institutions, faith communities, healthcare facilities, and municipalities and other governmental units. And whereas, the formative Bloomington Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group has provided fiscal and physical support to individual veterans and their families, meals and deployment returned, and return from active duty recognition ceremonies. And whereas, the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs has notified the group that its action plan has been approved and that henceforth, it will be officially recognized as the Bloomington Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby congratulate the Bloomington Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network on its official recognition by the state of Minnesota as a Yellow Ribbon City, and be it further resolved that the city council hereby acknowledges the Bloomington Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network to be a participating and active member of the community, and that the city of Bloomington will continue to provide applicable support to this chapter. Signed this day, the eighth of November 2021. As I said, this is a bit of a reaffirmation or a reboot for the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon effort here in the city of Bloomington, and I'd like to call Annette Kuiper forward here. Welcome. Thank you so very much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As Mayor Bussie told you, my name's Annette Kuiper, and I'm Director of Military Outreach for the Minnesota Department of Military Affairs, but this is also my home Yellow Ribbon Network. Bloomington Yellow Ribbon Network is one of eighty-four community networks in the state in over two hundred and seventy cities in the state of Minnesota. It is unique to Minnesota, in which we form a network of community members that fill the gaps in resources and support. And the reason I wanted our whole steering committee to come up in front of you, counsel and Mayor Bussie, is, and also your chief is on our committee as well. Thank you, Chief, for being a member to help us with especially families in Bloomington in crisis, military or veteran families in crisis. But I wanted to call out all the different factions that are here tonight, from Best Buy, who's one of our Yellow Ribbon companies represented here, the other two Yellow Ribbon companies that are on the steering committee are Mall of America and Donaldson, which you were at the proclamation to proclaim them, Donaldson Corporation, so thank you. Also, our local unit leader, Captain Osha McGillic, is, we are very closely tied to the unit within the Armory, as well as key support partners that are here with us. The American Legion, our veterans organization, is a key partner for us in the community to provide support to service members and veterans. And then I'd also like to introduce Molly Vogel. She's our soldier in family readiness support assistant that helps with anybody currently serving. Please, we wanna get any service member currently serving to resources that are available within, through Molly's organization and through our network as well. We also have members at large, members that help us through the school district, and members that help us in law enforcement. So please, we wanna get the word out in the community that we have a network of support for our service members, veterans, and military families, and we'd love for people to join our steering committee. We meet the third Tuesday of every month at six o'clock. Right now, it's virtual, but we hope to get back to the Armory very soon. So thank you for giving us this opportunity and just re-showing the support from leadership within Bloomington for our Yellow Ribbon Network. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you, and thanks to all of you for making this happen. This is, I appreciate this reaffirmation to the community that there is this support available, and we now, we know now more than ever how important this is to so many people, and thank you for your work and for making this all happen, so.
And I'm gonna leave our brochure with your secretary here.
Very good.
To get it in the meeting minutes.
Very good. Well, thank you so very much. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter has our consent business tonight. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I do indeed. I have heard about a hold on item 6.2. I have not heard anything else. I'm scanning faces and not seeing anyone change that, so with that being said, then I will move items 6.1 and 6.3 through 6.11.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. There are no further council discussion on this. Mr. Billard.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
Item 6.2.
And Mayor, this was one that you.
Actually, I held it. That is correct. Item 6.2 is the 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar, and I wanted to bring this forward. I just wanted to pull this out just to have a short discussion among councilmembers here. For those of you who are watching, we tinkered a bit with the council calendar not too long ago, a while ago, about a year, I think, I can't even recall, to make all of our meetings official voting meetings. In the past, we had official meetings, and then we had at least one study meeting a month where it wasn't a voting meeting, it was an opportunity just to collect information and so on. So we changed to the meetings, all meetings are now official meetings, regular meetings of the city council, with study items on the backside of our agenda, an opportunity to combine the two, and it's, it turns out to be three, sometimes four, meetings a month. And I promised, when we moved this forward, when we talked about this originally, I promised that we would revisit this and see if this was working, if people were happy with it, if they thought it was an effective way to manage this, if it was an effective way to do it, and so that's what I'm doing now. I think this is a perfect time to do it as we look to our 2022 council schedule, if this is, if this is something we want to continue doing. Thoughts, ideas on this? Councilmember Lowman.
I'll go ahead and speak up here. So I think one of the things that I have liked about having the, the kind of the combined is that if you did have something you needed to cover, we don't normally run into the problems of being able to, you know, we don't know when the next meeting is gonna be. So I had liked that, because from a logistics standpoint, trying to jump over that study meeting, that has been a little bit tricky in the past, and we've had a number of occasions with that. I think one thing that's a little bit challenging that I found with the setup is making that distinction between what is study and what is not, if you're from the general public. I don't know that we need to go back to the way that it was, but I think that serves as an opportunity for us to really kinda try to make some distinctions. I don't know if it's a break, or if it's something that kinda, you know, breaks that up, but I think we really need to, from a public perspective, if everyone's, everything seems like it is an official meeting, it, just from that, I've heard lots of feedback that that gets a little bit, a little bit confusing, and also can be a little bit boring to watch. So, but we've tried to keep it towards the end of our, end of our meeting, so that's the feedback that I have regarding to that. I just, I don't think we need to necessarily change back to the way it was, but I think it's just an opportunity for us to try to lean in and try to do a better job of making that distinction.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Lowman, and I agree, and I, that's on me, I think, because I think as we adopt the agenda, I think I could do a better job of describing that item eight, our organizational business, and the items within the organizational business are not necessarily, more often than not, they're once or twice perhaps, but more often than not, they're not voting items. They're not items for public hearings. These are items for us to learn more from staff or a staff report. So thank you for that comment, and I'll work on that and do a better job of that to make it more clear in the future. I think it's a communications issue more than anything else. Councilmember Nelson, I saw a hand up. I don't see a hand up now. No?
Yeah, Councilmember Lowman asked or stated the question, concern, thought that I had with regards to the study session versus organizational business. So I think that's addressed. The only real minor item that I had when I looked at the calendar was there's a meeting scheduled for the Monday before Thanksgiving, which may be difficult for some, but it will be difficult for me this year, but we're voting on next year's calendar, so that's fine.
Very good. Also, any additional feedback? Anything else? All right, well, I, as I said, I promised to bring it up when we made this change and wanted an opportunity, if we had any issues with this, that we'd bring them up and talk about them, but if everybody is fine with it, then I will move item 6.2 and move approval of the 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Coulter to adopt item 6.2 on the consent business. There are no further council discussion. Mr. Billard.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
On to item seven on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and we have one public hearing this evening. Item 7.1 is a public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2022 pavement management program, street reconstruction project. We talked about this in a previous meeting, I think it was kinda laid out in front of us, and this is an opportunity, I think, to get public input and to hear a bit more. And welcoming back Brian Hanson, our Public Works Development Coordinator, and Darren Rezak, our civil engineer working on this. Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As you mentioned, we're here this evening to discuss the 2022 pavement management program. Darren Rezak, the project engineer, will start our presentation, and I'll jump in to talk about some of the assessment portions here in the second half, so I'll turn it over to Darren to get started.
Good evening, Mr. Rezak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I got a couple slides here to go over our current pavement management program, some key deadlines that we hit, and then turn it over to Brian for the remainder of the, remainder of the presentation. So the current pavement management program is the city's proactive effort to maintain and improve the three hundred and forty lane miles, or excuse me, center lane miles of roadway that we have in Bloomington. The current pavement management program includes three different techniques. The reconstruct project, which is what we are recommending ordering tonight, the mill and overlay project, which was on the, the acknowledgement of the streets, was on the consent agenda tonight, and then the seal coat project, which is completed in-house with our city maintenance staff. So each of these activities are used under different circumstances, taking into consideration the age and the remaining usable life of the roadway. So in order to correctly group these streets into their respective projects, the city uses a classification system called a pavement condition index, or PCI. So each year, city maintenance staff inspects about a third of Bloomington, and that gives us an up-to-date scoring in order to rank or classify the different roadways. So from, from our updated classifications, staff is able to put together our future project maps, which we project about five years into the future. So because these three separate projects come with different project costs, the city is able to better fiscally manage Bloomington roadways. So the figures that you see there, the one on the left would be a, the life cycle of a roadway prior to the pavement, the current pavement management program. So once a street gets reconstructed, it would essentially receive a PCI score of one hundred, and without doing any maintenance techniques, you would see the, the road would degrade down to zero, which would mean there'd be no more usable life. And so the figure on the right is a depiction of a street in the current PMP program, which it gets reconstructed, and then with intermittent maintenance techniques, including the seal coats and the overlays, we're able to extend the life cycle of that roadway. So our current PMP program right now, the reconstruct, well, street listing that we have originally sent before you included about four miles of a reconstruct project. Included in the agenda packet, we are also recommending the removal of the Lindell Avenue segment from one hundred and six to the south terminus. So there's a couple reasons for that. So originally, when the staff was looking at reconstructing that segment back in 2019, we reached out to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, who maintained the boat landing on the south end. At that time, they did not have any interest in improving that boat landing, but times have changed, and they are now showing great interest in doing a joint project with the city. So some type of amenities down there on the south end. Staff is actually gonna be meeting with U.S. Fish here over the next week or so to come up with, kind of gather a scope on that. Also, with the reconstruct project, there's also a portion of residential homes on the Lindell portion, where our street assessment doesn't, it's a little unique situation with our special assessment policy. So staff is gonna be, if, if removed as part of the project, staff would look to, I guess, develop a, develop a more applicable policy to them and bring that before the council and have that included in the special assessment policy. The overlay, like I said, that was on the acknowledging the street list, was on the consent agenda tonight, and the seal coat, we do about thirty miles in-house every year, so. And then you can see the goals is to keep the PCI at seventy or above, keep our PCIs of the thirty-five, less than thirty-five to under ten percent, and then just historically, our 2020 PCI was seventy-five and our 2021 PCI was seventy-six. So we feel that removing the Lindell piece will have a very negligible impact on our overall city PCI, so. And just the breakdown of our various fundings between the reconstruct, the overlay, and the seal coat, and then our trail improvement. So the biggest difference between these is the first two on the top left is the reconstruct project, we do have assessments on that, as well as we do issue bounds for that with the overlay and the seal coating and trails comes out of our franchise fees, so. And just some, some dates here, so should the project be ordered, we would work, internally, city staff would work on putting together our construction plans and specifications with a plan to bid the project as early as we can in spring of 2022, construct it in summer of 2022, and then Brian and myself would be, come back again in fall of 2022 for the special assessment public hearing.
All right, thanks, Darren. I'm gonna talk a little bit now about the assessment portion of the project. So as we've talked about previously, the city's special assessment policy has been in place since 1962, and the basis of really our special assessment policy is that adjusted front footage, and that is what we use to determine the assessments for properties subject to an assessment with an improvement project. So the purpose of the adjusted front footage is to equate all lots, regardless of their shape, into a rectangle, their lot, to determine of an adjusted front footage that can be evenly applied throughout all different types of parcels throughout the city. So as Darren mentioned, our policy has been in place since 62, and we've updated it as needed throughout those years. For this year's project, the specific neighborhood of the bluffs on Sands Pier was unique in that our assessment policy does a good job of contemplating different scenarios. However, this typical scenario was not contemplated in our assessment policy to date. We had some scenarios that were very similar, but none that actually were exactly what was happening in that area. So when staff put together the estimated assessments to be sent out to all properties, which is required by state statute, we had to use the tools that were available to us at the time, and the assessment tool that we used, or the calculation tool that we used, we knew was gonna yield assessments, estimated assessments, that were most likely higher than what the final assessment would be and the special benefit would be for those properties. So that was just kind of a function of what we had available at the time, and we were aware that that would probably elicit some, some reaction from most residents, and it did, and we had a lot of conversations about that, so that was good. So as Darren mentioned before, if it's staff's recommendation to come back to council here in 2022, and I think we have some ideas of how we could better calculate the assessment for this particular neighborhood, that would give a clearer or better estimated benefit to those properties. So like I said, we're recommending removing Lindell from the project for 2022, but we'd still like to come back to council to amend our assessment policy to be able to address this situation. So in future years, when we do come back and assess and send out estimated assessments, estimated assessment would be more in line with what we expect the final assessment amount to be. So for the 2022 project, before you hear, I have some surfacing and curb and gutter amounts here. I will note that the amounts I'm showing here do include Lindell Avenue segment right now. As part of your agenda item, there was an addendum included that removed the Lindell Avenue segment, so there's no curb and gutter being assessed for the Lindell Avenue segment, so those numbers will remain unchanged. The surfacing would change a bit, because we wouldn't be doing quite as many miles of surfacing, so the total cost would come down a little bit, but the actual adjustment to that single and two-family residential rate only changes about a dollar, so it's forty-six dollars per foot as opposed to forty-seven dollars per foot. But as you can see here, for the full project, including Lindell Avenue... to $47 per foot. But as you can see here, for the full project, including Lindell Avenue, for surfacing came in at just under, over $6.5 million, and the total frontage of all those properties that were subject to a surfacing assessment came in just over $35,000. So again, taking that total cost for the improvement divided by the total AFF, we get our 100% rate. And then in Bloomington, we do assess at a 25% rate for single and two-family homes and a 50% rate for all other properties. So that's where you can see the $47 per foot and the $93 per foot. And then doing that same exercise for the curb and gutter, the estimated cost of that improvement came in at just over $1.6 million. You can see the adjusted front footage is different than the surfacing because in Bloomington, the policy is to assess for curb and gutter when it's initially installed on a street. So for street segments that are included in the 2022 PMP that already have curb and gutter in place, those properties would not be subject to an assessment for that improvement, just for surfacing. So that's why you see a difference in those numbers. Again, doing that total cost divided by the total AFF, you get that $106 per foot for the 100% rate, and then the $26 and $53 for the 25% and 50% rate accordingly. This graphic just shows how our policy compares to other cities in the metro area as far as the assessment percentages. As I said, single and two-family in Bloomington are at that 25% rate. All other property types are at 50% rate. So you can see it varies from city to city how they do that. I do want to point out, Edina, we've had, we just updated this graphic this year. If you remember, in the past, Edina had 100% assessment rate for their PMP projects. They're in the process of eliminating special assessments and imposing an actual, just a flat fee to all property owners. So their assessment rate is declining over 16 years, and at the end of that, they will no longer have special assessments, but they'll be recouping those costs through a fee that would be included to all property taxpayers in Edina, so. So for the assessment payment options, if the project were to be ordered, as Darren mentioned, we would go ahead and bid the project in the spring, and then we'd be back before the council in the fall with the assessment roll for approval of the council. If the assessment roll is approved, anyone that's subject to an assessment would have until November 29th of 2022 to pay a portion of $100 up to the total amount of their assessment, and no interest would be applied to that. After November 29th, whatever remaining balance is there for that assessment, that would automatically get rolled onto the property tax statement, and then the principal will be spread out evenly over 10 years with interest being applied annually to the declining principal. So if a property owner was to choose to not prepay any portion of their assessment for the 2022 PMP project if ordered, the first time they would see a bill for the project would be with their May 2023 property tax statement. After the property, after the assessment is rolled onto the property tax statement, the options for payment are to pay the amount due with that particular property tax bill, or anytime during those 10 years, you could pay off the entire remaining amount, and no additional interest is applied at that point. But after it's on the property tax roll, or property tax statement, excuse me, the only options are to pay that amount that's due or the total amount. There's no additional payments will be accepted by the county. We do have a hardship deferral program, so it does defer an assessment, doesn't forgive an assessment for those who qualify, and that would remain in place as long as the applicant still qualifies for the hardship deferral. And we do have some qualifying criteria there, including they must be a senior citizen, retired by virtue of permanent disability, or active military personnel, which was just added this year, and then they must meet some income requirements and house value requirements to apply. So the property owner contact, we had our informational meeting earlier in October, October 26, with the residents. Prior to that, we sent out the estimated assessment notice, the notice of public hearing. So we had two informational meetings, and we're at Public Works Building, which were well attended. And then after the meeting, we've had some contact from residents via email, I've had some phone calls, and then I did reach out to the Bluffs on Sands Pier contacts who had been in contact with us at those public meetings to let them know of our recommendation this evening to remove that Lindell Avenue segment from this year's PMP project as well. So again, just to kind of in summary, the PMP is the right action at the right time. It prolongs the pavement life of all the pavement here in Bloomington. It reduces the overall cost of maintenance for all of the residents of Bloomington, and just helps maintains, maintain the city's infrastructure. So with that, we do have a recommended motion for your consideration this evening, and then if the project is ordered, as we mentioned, we would be back before you in October of 2022 with the assessment roll and ask for your recommendation on the levying of the assessments. At that time, at this time, I think we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Hanson or Mr. Rezak? Councilmember Lohman, and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of questions about the Lindell piece. So my understanding is that that is being, that part of Lindell is being removed from the current project. Is my understanding correct with that? So with respect to that, from an assessment standpoint, once we move this group to a different one, I know that in the past that we have kept the assessment the same. Are we going to be following that same process in terms of being under the rates that are provided this year as opposed to future years?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, what you speak of with keeping the assessment the same is typically what the last, this past year, what we did is when the project was actually ordered, the assessment rate was set, and then we deferred the, or delayed the levying of that assessment till the next year due to construction impacts and the ability of them to have that constructed this year. So that would not be the case this year because we would not have that Lindell Avenue segment actually ordered with the project. So it'd be a little different scenario than what you're describing there, so.
And I think also coming into play will be the second look at the assessment policy that you're going to be doing coming into 2022.
Exactly, yes. We would want to revise our special assessment policy to better reflect that particular neighborhood so that we'd be able to provide more accurate assessment amounts.
Understanding that we are, you know, moving these folks out of this particular one to a different one, and I wonder if we would consider that. I know that may not be standard process, but I do understand that since they're not a part of this project, that might be difficult to pull off. So I did want to just make sure we clarified that so that folks understood that if we move it from this year's project to another year, that there could be increases from this year to the next year. So there's no illusion or any confusion around that that may occur with that. And I think the rationale makes a lot of sense, but maybe some folks should speak to that. The second item that I wanted to just ask, I know there's been a lot of work done down there in that Lindell area, and I wanted to see if there was any updates in terms of, I know staff had been looking into, I guess, some work that I believe MINDOT was doing in that area, and I wanted to know if we had done any follow-up work with that at all, if we had any updates on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, in terms of the actual construction, or I guess?
Yeah, to be a little more specific, I know there's some landscaping that was going to be done down there around the Lindell area, and there was some promise to get that worked on. Maybe you don't necessarily know, maybe there's other staff, person who knows it, but I was told that you guys may be able to speak to that. I'm not sure if somebody could speak to that, because I know there's some work that's being done down there. I know folks may be interested in that. It's a little bit tangential, sorry, Mayor, but I know the folks are here, and I want to make sure they know what's going on.
Ms. Long, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, MINDOT is working on putting together separate contracts to do their landscaping. Their typical process is a little bit different than the city's process, where we bid our construction and our restoration all in one contract. MINDOT does them as two separate contracts, and so they have recently completed the 35W River Bridge construction contract, so they are working on the restoration contract now as we speak. And we have also been talking to them about some noise concerns, and they're relooking at that as well.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick clarification, follow-up on the question Councilmember Lohman asked about MINDOT. There was a public comment that we received in our packet with regards to that maybe we received some funding in order to redo this street, and maybe that just relates to the landscaping, but did we receive any funding? What's the status of that? Can you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, we did, the city did receive funding from Ames Construction for the use of Lindell Avenue during the construction of the 35W Bridge, and those funds would be earmarked for when the Lindell Avenue segment is reconstructed. Those would be put towards the surfacing cost of that. So even though we're not recommending inclusion of Lindell Avenue with the 2022 PMP, when that segment does get included in a future PMP, those funds will be applied to that surfacing improvement to lower the overall cost for everyone involved in that project.
Thank you. And then my other question was with regards to stormwater. It looked like the cost for the stormwater went down because the Lindell Avenue portion, so I assume there was some maybe 230, 235,000 for some stormwater there is, and I know we've had issues with particularly a multifamily facility just north of there. Will that help with that, or what, is this just taking care of older infrastructure? Is it expanding the capacity? What was the scope of that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so if you drive down Lower Lindell right now, you can see that there is a very significant amount of surface water that does come out of that bank on the east side. So included as part of the project was pretty substantial improvements to the stormwater down there. There's also a culvert down there right before the teardrop turnaround, and included in there was a budget for replacing that. We're not sure if that will need to be replaced or not. We're still investigating that right now, but that was the, that was why you saw a reduction in the stormwater, was removing the Lindell Avenue stormwater as part of the overall project.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
I appreciate the questions regarding the clarification of Lindell Avenue, but just to be clear here, Lindell Avenue won't be part of this project. This is probably, will be pushed off into the future as we look at it. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have one quick question that was, well, it was brought up to me today by a constituent who lives in the area. So related to the Sands Pier community, the issue that was brought up to me is that some of the townhomes are duplex and then some are threeplex, so then assessed at different rates, which doesn't seem quite fair. And so is that one of the issues that will be addressed as you kind of reconsider how our policy will apply, or if there's an addendum to the policy?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, yes, that was one thing that we looked at before we sent out the assessment notice, or the estimated assessment notices, and we had the same questions because properties that were, for all intents and purposes, similar, very similar, but were included in a duplex versus a triplex, and our current policy are looked at at a different assessment rate. So that would be something that we would be bringing back to council as we make those, you know, adjustments to our current special assessment policy, yes.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? I see no hands going up. And so with that, thank you, gentlemen. Don't go far. I'm sure there'll be questions for you as we get on into this here. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 7.1 right now, public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2022 pavement management program street reconstruction project. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to this? If you could, you could please come forward, make sure you sign in, and if you could state your name for the record, and off you go.
Well, I may be in danger of being called out of order because I'm from Bluffs on Sands Pier.
I won't call you out of order for that, I promise.
But my name is Nathan Mueller, and I live at 10745 Lindell Bluffs Trail. And really, two requests that I think I would like to make of the council, and I think there are a couple of other residents of the area that would have similar concern. First thing was, I had specifically asked the question about the reimbursement from Ames Construction, and the word that I heard back was that those funds, while they would be applied to the project in the year in which Lindell is reconstructed, they would not offset Lindell specifically. They would be part of the entire project. So for example, if there were 10 streets in that year for reconstruction, it would be applied evenly, not just to Lindell. I guess I would ask for reconsideration of that approach. Second thing is, as we consider the approach for special assessments, I think there are a number of us in the community who would welcome the opportunity for input as that policy is being developed, rather than having it developed in isolation from the community. So I would put myself forward. I think there are a couple of other residents in the neighborhood who would be more than happy to help represent our community as that policy is developed.
Knowing more than a few people in that community, I know there are not a lot of shrinking violets in that community, so I think.
You could say that.
I think there would be, a lot of folks would be willing to be part of the process, and we will definitely take that into consideration.
All right.
For some input, yes, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lohman.
I hate to disappoint, but when the gentleman here asked about the reimbursement piece, could he be a little more clear about what he wanted to see happen with that? It'd be helpful, just as staff looks at that, to have just a better sense of what.
Well, I think our request would be that that be devoted specifically to that individual segment, rather than just being applied broadly to all of the streets that are under reconstruction that year. Since it was specific, the reimbursement was specific to the damage done to that street.
Understood.
That makes sense to me.
Thanks. Anyone else like to speak to item 7.1 this evening? We also would be taking anyone on the phone, so Reza, is there anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 7.1 tonight?
No questions at this time. Please continue.
All right. Yes, please, come forward. Good evening. If you could state your name and ultimately sign in.
I will do that. My name is Ray Navarro. I also live on Bluffs on Sands Pier. My address is 10721 Lindell Bluffs Trail. And Mr. Mueller, Nathan, just commented basically on the two things that I think the majority of the owners in that development are asking. So I just wanted to thank the council for taking, and also thank Brian and Darren for your recommendation. They obviously heard us loud and clear, which was kind of hard to avoid at the earlier session. But nonetheless, you know, it is important that obviously that road gets improved because it's in terrible shape, as you all know. The other thing that I would ask, and again, to reiterate what Nathan said, is yes, involvement from the owners, or a group of owners, would certainly be appreciated. So I hope you are open to that. Mr. Mayor, you said earlier something about being inclusive and reasonable, I think, or something to that effect, rational. And really, that's what this subject matters about to us as owners, is we understand we should pay for something, but obviously, the way it was presented initially caused quite a bit of an uproar amongst the owners, and I think justifiably so, because it didn't make a whole lot of sense. And we appreciate, again, the presentation that was given and the explanation that stated the policy was a bit outdated, it's been updated, but there really wasn't a example that was very similar to our particular property. And so again, want to thank the council, as well as the staff, for listening to us and hopefully following up, and we'll obviously revisit this at a later date. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. And I think, yes, we're in agreement that the current assessment tool is not perfectly applicable here, and we have to find a better way to make it more applicable, absolutely. Anyone else wishing to speak? Reza, anyone on the phone for item 7.1?
No one's on the phone. Please continue.
All right, last call for anybody in the chambers here wishing to speak to this. Seeing no one coming forward, no one on the phone. Counsel, I would look for a motion to close this evening's public hearing on item 7.1.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Carter, to close the public hearing on item 7.1. There are no further council discussion. Mr. Brillard.
Councilmember Baloga? We'll come back. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye.
Councilmember Baloga, if you're there.
All right, well, this will close with, it passes with, on a 5-0 vote to close the public hearing.
Mayor? Oh, to close the public hearing, yes.
Yep, to close the public hearing. So, Counsel, additional questions, additional comments on this?
Mayor, do you want to let the operator?
We'll get into it in just a moment here. I just want to make sure that if we have an opportunity to get Mr. Councilmember Baloga back, if we could, see if we could do that. I think this is a reasonable compromise, especially I, I think this is a reasonable compromise, especially in regards to Lyndale Avenue. Uh, I appreciate the concern, but I appreciate the, the work the staff put into this and the concerns brought forward by the neighborhood. I think it makes perfect sense. Uh, I also think that, um, I, every year we do this, we do this public hearing every year, and, um, I think it makes good sense to look at the assessments, which I know sometimes are significant and oftentimes are hardships for a lot of folks. It's a big chunk of money, but to look at that breakdown of 25% to 75% for, that the community picks up the, the three quarters of it and the individual with 25%. And obviously there's a benefit in front of their home, but there's a benefit to the entire community to have good roadways and, and to have our good, our streets in good condition. So I'm, I'm always encouraged when we do this and always encouraged with the, the staff work that has gone into this and the thought that has gone into this for the past four decades or so, I think, and we see the, the, the benefits in, uh, in our streets for, um, for the city of Bloomington. And, um, any, any input, uh, counsel? Councilmember Loman?
I guess the only thing I, I would say, Mayor, is I certainly appreciate the fact that we were able to, to pull this back and to, uh, find a way to, to basically, uh, to try to have this opportunity for us to have this conversation about what this looks like. Now hopefully we'll come forward with a, a, a more equitable, uh, solution with that, that conversation. I also heard that, um, that folks would like to participate and be able to be involved with that process. I'm not sure if we've done that before in terms of, which I don't think there's a problem with doing that, but, uh, but I'm hoping that we would, would consider. Uh, but I don't know what that looks like, but I imagine that it's not just getting folks from the Lyndale area, but also from across the city. Cause you had just mentioned, uh, just a moment ago that, uh, it's not only the 25% that, uh, or the 50%, depending on how the, uh, the assessment works out, but it's also the 75% of those folks who are also represented in the other, other part of it that may want to be a, a part of, of that discussion. So I'm just hoping that we'll be able to do that. And, um, I, I do find it interesting to see that ADINA has changed their, and that's maybe a, maybe a separate issue, but it'd be interesting to go down that pathway of, you know, it was 19, you know, 60 or so, when we looked at this assessment, maybe it makes some sense to, to go back and, and have a, a more broader look at this until.
Thank you, councilmember. Anything else, councilmembers? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, I just really, uh, want to express my appreciation for staff as well and, and for the folks in the community who are interested in participating in this process and, and having your voices heard. You know, we, we get a lot of public comment about a lot of different things at council meetings. It's rare that we have folks beaten down our doors to talk about special assessments. So, um, I just, I appreciate that. And I, I, you know, when that, that chart came up showing the different, um, special assessment percentages and all that, that, um, that to me is just another example of the thought that we put into the policies and procedures and how we do things in the city of Bloomington, recognizing that, you know, as the mayor said, that, um, there is a community-wide benefit to doing this, that we all benefit from having well-maintained roads. And so, um, I, you know, I think just kind of portioning it out that way in, in a way that's, um, frankly more affordable for everybody as we, as we do it that way. Um, it just, it just makes a lot of sense. And I, you know, I think as we talked too about sort of the, the costs of living, the costs of being part of, of our community here in Bloomington, that's one way to, um, really show that we sort of, we are all in this together. So, um, I just wanted to raise that and, and say thank you to, to everyone involved.
Thank you, councilmember. Anything else, counsel? If not, uh, I would look for action and I would also make a point, uh, because this is an assessment, we need four fifths votes from the council, so this would take all six members to vote in favor of this to push this through, uh, just to, to be clear on that. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clarified, clear on that and wanted to clarify that. So I would look for action. Councilmember Loman?
I'd be happy to do that. Sorry, that's part of the reason why I was talking so long, I was hoping that another member would join. With that being said, Mayor, I'd go ahead and move to adopt a resolution ordering the 2022-101 Pavement Management Program PMP Street Reconstruction Project, Street Reference, numbers one through three, dash five through 12.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Coulter to approve the feasibility report and adopt the resolution ordering the 2022 Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Project. And I'm looking to Ms. Manderschad, I think, who I believe is getting clarification on the question that I'm going to ask here. The last two bullets here, do they need to be involved or included in this current motion or can they be involved in a second motion to clarify things?
Mayor, uh, mayor members, I was actually talking with our city engineer about something else, so.
Never mind then, okay? All right. We have a motion and a second, counsel. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Brillert?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Thank you much to staff. Thank you to the residents for your input on this and for, for helping, helping us to, to shape this up a little bit. I appreciate it and appreciate your work on this and, uh, you'll be hearing from us. So thanks much. With that, uh, we are done with our public input for this evening. So, uh, Riza, I think we can let you go. Thank you for your help this evening, but we are done with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, counsel.
Thanks. Good evening. And with that, we'll move on to item eight, which is our organizational business. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, and Mr. Councilmember Loman asked me to clarify, this is actually part of the council meeting that is more or less the, the study session. So there will be no public input here. We're not taking votes. We're, uh, we're getting information from staff on a couple of items. And we will start with item 8.1, which is, uh, we're going to take a look and have a discussion about our public participation in our budget process that we have underway right now. And Kari Carlson, our budget manager, is here to lead us through that. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel, thank you. Yes, we would like to revisit the conversation about public participation in the budget process that we started in the summer in July. And, uh, before I get into the slides of this presentation, I just want to give a little history or background about public participation in the budget process. Really before last year, the main public participation consisted of the truth and taxation public hearing in December. But then of course, last year that all changed with the pandemic and the challenges that the pandemic brought to the budget. And the council, of course, appointed a community budget advisory committee of residents and appointed them to address those budget challenges and to recommend budget reduction options. And, uh, we had several virtual public engagement sessions that were open to the public. And all of those meetings were also in here, they were televised, um, they were recorded. And, um, a lot of people that were really interested in that learned a lot about the budget that they didn't have an opportunity to before. We created a whole new website with all of that information. So that was really an intense effort that we had last year that started like in June and they met every week until about October. Lot of hours put in by that committee and by staff. And, uh, and it was a lot of success. So I think, uh, seeing all that, what we can do and being, um, getting public participation and being very transparent, uh, we wanted to continue that. And so, um, for tonight, um, next slide, I have, uh, an outline of what I'm going to go over. And so I'm just going to go over what we've done this year as far as community engagement in the budget process. And, uh, just some highlights from when I was here in July and talking about this. We had, if you recall, we had a couple of different options that we presented to you for what we would do next year and future years. And then some, um, just some summary of the feedback from that night. And then, uh, based on that feedback, um, recommendation for future bud, for future budgets. So let's talk about, uh, what we did, what we've done this year. So, um, we created a, uh, a new budget page and it's very easy to access. If you go to the city of Bloomington website, right there on that homepage, there is a link for the city budget. And so there, anytime we talk about budget at council meetings, um, we, we put links to that and we queue it up so you can go right to that section and watch it live. We have all the, uh, presentation materials, um, detailed budget information that we provide to the council. We have a link to the Let's Talk Bloomington Budget Project site. We have all the budget books there. It's kind of a one-stop shop to get anything about the budget and it's updated regularly. And also any community budget information sessions that we've had, we advertise those there. So that's something new that we've started this year. It's sort of, before we had the community, the community budget advisory committee, you know, page, and this sort of grew from that. And it's something that we're going to continue to have. Next slide, so then we had some community budget engagement sessions and we had two in August. One was a virtual session that was recorded. There's a little screenshot of it there. And of course we recorded that, we put it on that budget website. And then we also had something, um, during, on a Wednesday night where we had the midweek music and market. And so we had something set up where we had an information table and we talked to people and we advertised that as an in-person event. And, uh, we did not have a lot of attendees, uh, for those events. Actually for the Zoom session, we only had a couple of people registered. No one actually came on to that call. So, um, there didn't seem to be as much excitement or draw to the budget as there were last year, but we went ahead, uh, and we just recorded it because we were all set up to do it in case anybody came on. Um, and then we did publish that on our website and we do have some views. People watched that. We also put the presentation slides out there with that information. So, um, of course for the midweek music, um, the event that we did with that, we did see people because people were already coming to that event, which was very popular. It was a nice night. We did have people stop by, we gave them information. I think we had one person that came specifically to talk to us, um, that had questions prepared. And that was, that was great. So we did have some more interaction with the community. Seems to help if there's already something going on that's bringing people in. So we go to the next slide. So we tried to do something exciting because we had a few more sessions in October and we didn't have that much excitement about our August ones. So, uh, we came up the, the idea of having some prizes to try to entice people. Communications Division also tried a, a new approach with a fun video, um, kind of with a theme of a monster truck rally to come down to the budget sessions or tune into the virtual session and have a chance to win prizes. Uh, we received 45 prize entries. And in order to register to win a prize, you had to go to the city budget website. So along with encouraging residents to attend these sessions, we, we, um, kind of publicized that we have a budget website, so they had to go to that and educate, but educate residents that it existed. But, um, here you can see on this slide, uh, the beginning of that, um, advertisement from the communications division, and then we were doing the drawings in here, uh, for the prize winners. And some of those prizes included like a ride along with the fire chief or some tickets to an artistry show that were donated by artistry or, and we were, um, trying to, the prizes are reflecting like city services or maybe learning more about city services. Another one was a behind-the-scenes taping of the council minute with the mayor. So, um, so that did, uh, encourage some more people, um, to attend some of these sessions. So if you go to the next slide, so we did have, um, another thing we did, so instead of just me being the one that was presenting information and, um, having, um, question and answers and getting feedback from the community, the, uh, the mayor and the fire chief graciously agreed to be the presenters. And that did have, uh, I think more, um, more excitement about that too. So for the Zoom session, we actually had 34 people register for that. But then of that, 11 people actually attended and listened to the information and then about five or so stayed. And we did have a really good discussion, but you know, smaller, smaller numbers. And then for the in-person session that the fire chief did, um, that Yuli came and did, we had 21 people registered for that, but, uh, only six actually attended and came to the council chambers and then about five stayed for that too. They were very good conversations, but again with kind of all this effort put in, um, we were hoping to have more people actually come. But, um, another thing, we did get some information when people registered for those sessions and it seemed to be pretty evenly split across all the zip codes in Bloomington. But, um, so people were interested and they registered and they had to go to the website, but maybe didn't actually end up coming for different, a variety of reasons. So that's, that's, uh, for this year. And then some highlights, this was back, I just wanted.
Stand there for just a second?
Oh, yes, yes.
If I could please, uh, so you, you recorded all these things and granted only five people showed up for the discussion or however many. Do we have a count on how many people actually watched that, you know, accessed it through the city website and actually sat and watched the presentations?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I could get that information. I don't know of how many, how many views it's had, but, um, I will find out and let you all know.
Thank you.
But that is a very good point. Both of those, uh, Zoom sessions were recorded and they're still out there. And, um, when people have questions, we direct them there to first information. So it is nice to have that out there. So this slide here was the same slide we had in July and we were talking about, um, two different options going forward. We had recommended for this year, we were going to be doing, um, community engagement. We weren't going to start off with a budget advisory committee right away. So these options were, are for next year and going forward. So one of the options was to have kind of a standing community budget advisory committee, a C-BAC. And that, um, if we want to do this, that we were, what we were looking at is that applications will go out now, like in this month and be due next month. And that, uh, the council would make appointments in February and their terms would start in March and they would work like along with the budget, uh, March through November and that the council would decide their, their scope of work and focus. That was an option that we talked about back in July. And then on the next slide, uh, different option was rather than having a standing committee, that, um, finance and our community outreach and engagement division would go out into the community and do kind of robust community engagement. And we would focus on including diverse community partner organizations, um, some of like what we did, um, last year, um, with a 2021 budget. And that we would organize several in-person and virtual public engagement sessions. Of course, we already have the city, uh, budget website that would, that would continue. Social media, Let's Talk Bloomington, um, and use their engagement vehicle to go out. So those were the different options that we were presenting back in July. And then if we go to the next slide, um, this is just sort of recapping what we heard from the council when we presented those. And we heard, um, maybe we want to look at a new version of a C-BAC that maybe focuses on one specific issue or item of the budget or a more hybrid approach that had some elements of what we did with the C-BAC last year, but also robust community engagement. We overwhelmingly heard that more community input is important. We don't want to go back to how we were where we just had public, you know, meetings, but, that the count, you know, the council meetings where they discuss budget and the truth and taxation hearing, but that was pretty much it. I think we're, we want to be more transparent to that and get more public input. And that, um, there was an emphasis that the overall budget tax levy is ultimately responsibility to the council, that maybe a formalized C-BAC is not necessary. Uh, maybe we use it as a check-in mechanism or if there is a standing committee, kind of like what we had last year, um, that gives input on the entire budget, that they should have, you know, longer terms, um, so that there's, um, some continuity and they, as they learn things, that they, um, have an option to take that from year to year. So those are kind of the highlights from what we summarized. So based on that, um, this is what we are recommending and would like to get your input on and discussion on. And so, uh, what we're thinking is for every year, you know, to kind of have some, some set community budget engagement. So we're, we're going to keep our, you know, website that's been very popular. It's an easy place for people to go and look and get information when, without having to go to multiple places. Uh, we'll always have our Let's Talk Bloomington, um, site and we can ask pointed questions about the budget and get feedback there. I think, you know, continuing to have, um, the, both a virtual and in-person event and getting people, having people more familiar with that is and that they expect that, um, having that as an option I think is good. And maybe we can look into more creative ways to entice people to come and get engaged in those. And then, um, to be more focused, to have a more focused effort on our, um, to include diverse community partner organizations in those conversations. And then the next idea we wanted to present to you is, uh, what we were, um, calling a C-BAT, so not as formal as a committee, but more of a task force. So what we meant by that is, and maybe it wouldn't happen every year, but if the council, if there was something specific that the council would like community input on, that if they created a, more of a task force that could look at a specific, um, issue. And it would, um, it would be a shorter time commitment for our members and that there would be just a clear assignment from the city council. And, uh, and then we, if you wanted to do this, it would be something that would be created, uh, by a resolution and have a certain time period. And, uh, we would also follow, um, open, open meeting laws for that. And I don't know if that's required for a task force, but I think just to be transparent, we would kind of do it the same way where we have published agendas and we would record the meetings and have them on the budget website. And then this is some information. And then this is some information from, Emily Larson provided this from our community outreach and engagement division. And we were just talking about public involvement. And she had just provided this as some important things for you to keep in mind. And that just this recommendation is just based on public engagement experience and just the public participation principles that you've heard Emily talk about. And just being mindful of involving those that are affected by decision and this decision-making process. And that it's clear that the council, just to be clear about the decision that, that is being made and how the public can contribute to that decision before they begin the engagement effort. So they know upfront what it is that they're going to be weighing in on. And on this next slide, there's that IAP2 spectrum of participation that we refer to a lot. And on this graph, this graphic, you know, the blue represents the city and orange represents the public. And so similar to a committee, a community budget advisory committee, a community budget advisory task force would still fall under that collaborate level of the public participation spectrum. And so that means there's a clear purpose or tasks that would be defined to address a decision that you want them to make. And then the recommendations that would be developed by this task force would hopefully be incorporated into decisions, you know, to the maximum extent that's possible. And so the decision makers, which would be the council, would agree like on this, you know, promise to the public before it begins, like this is what we'd like you to do. And just giving clear direction. So a little different timeline that we were thinking that this would have as opposed to what we were looking at in July with a formal committee. So it's going to be a tight timeline, but I think it would be better to do this early in the process rather than later. So we'd still want to do applications, have them do in December, so next month. And interviews in January, but have them work February through April. And then have a recommendation in May. If there is something, if there's something you want them to focus on. So that as the whole budget process kicks off in May with city staff, they have that going into it instead of the city staff starting one way and then a task force coming in here at the same time and then it all coming together. So it would be front-ended at the beginning and not the entire year. So that's, that's what we were recommending for that. So last slide here before kind of open it up for questions and discussion and get your thoughts on what we're presenting is if we would, if, or if you would want to do something like this, you know, is there certain issues you can think of that you would want a task force to focus in on? And how many members would you want on it? The, the C-BAC committee had nine members. Would you want there to be a council liaison on this task force? And who would you want to have, select the committee members? Would it be the council would interview and select them? Or would you want staff or a combination? And would you want there to be a chair or co-chairs? So those are just kind of some of the questions that we had. So with that, I'll stop and leave it to you and see if there's questions or discussion on how you'd like us to go forward.
Council thoughts on this? I think even the first question above the first question. And what, what, what do you think of this idea? What do you think of this approach? Is this, it's kind of a, I think, a combination of a few different things that we talked about back in July and brings up a number of different possibilities. So feedback just on the idea in general and any other questions that Ms. Carlson has presented in front of us here. Any thoughts? Councilmember Loman?
I saw that lead off. I did have a question before I responded to some of your, your questions here. On, on page nine or 201, whichever one you want to use. You've got the, the C-BAC timeline. Was the idea behind that to just every year recruit people regardless of whether or not we actually seat them? Or was it the idea that we may have some ideas this year and we want to recruit for those people?
Mayor and Councilmember Loman, we would do this timeline. I think first we'd start to see if you wanted, if there was a specific issue that you would like a task force to look into. And if there was for this upcoming budget, then we would start the process of applications and interviews. If there wasn't, then we would not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. So I guess if there was an issue, I think we, one of them we covered today. I did, I turned to you, Mayor, and I said, you know, it would be interesting to, to have a deeper look in terms of those, those assessments, especially with how Edina has, you know, changed their, their process. And it's my understanding, I think, Councilmember Carter had mentioned that Richfield may be already having a different process already. We may be wrong, but, but it'd be interesting. And that would be just, that's another example of why we may want to look into that. So I guess when I, when I kind of look at, at this presentation, the, the thing that I kind of have always struggled with when I kind of go door to door is just the breadth of knowledge that, that folks tend to have. And so there's always been my deep desire, Mayor and colleagues here, that, that there'd be a deeper understanding of the, of the budget process across the entire city. And I know this isn't the world's most exciting type of thing. But I do think that, you know, that these budget decisions are, are policy decisions. And so the, the greater understanding that people have. And so that's one of the reasons that I like with this presentation, the hybrid model really does. And I know we're, we're struggling to get people engaged with this. And I think over time, we're, we're going to get better at doing that. But I think that's, I think for me, I think this is probably the most important pillar, that we have a better understanding of what we do. And then secondarily, I think it, it does make some sense to have a group of people beyond the council who have a, a much deeper understanding of kind of what we're doing here, that, that have some relationships to folks that are outside of it, whether it is done through a task force or whether or not it's done through a standing committee that goes forward every year. You know, I, I've got my own preference in terms of, of that. Because I think when you look at the word deeper understanding of it, obviously to me, it probably means a standing committee that goes from year to year. And those folks build that experience up. But I do think that there is some opportunity for a task force that's out there to, to kind of focus in on one particular item and really kind of dive into that and then bring more people involved. So it kind of goes back to my first piece. So I think there's, there's a, there's an opportunity for, for both things to, to kind of happen there. So I like this recommendation that staff has, has put forward. And I like the, the larger group piece, the broader kind of understanding and trying to get a deeper understanding out there of folks. And then just secondarily, and I know we have a task force here, but I'll, I'll advocate for the, for the standing committee. So I do think it does make some sense when we get ready to dive into some items from year to year. Having that, that previous year's experience on the budget, no matter what that item is that we ask from a task force standpoint, you're just going to be able to grasp that. And I think it will, from a staffing perspective, reduce some of the need to have to meet every single week. And maybe it's every other week or maybe it's, you know, two times a month or something like that. I just think from a, from a long-term sustainability, I just, I, I worry by having a task force and doing that every year. Well, what kind of, you know, what do you call it? You know, in the hotel industry, the occupancy is too high for staff. We're working hard on that kind of thing. So that's my thought. My preference would be the standing committee over the task force, but I'm open to either one.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm a little bit of two minds about this. I mean, I, I think this is a good recommendation. I, I understand, I, you know, I advocated for a, a, something that more closely resembled the process we had last year. And I, I was clearly in the minority in that discussion and that's fine. I'm kind of used to that at this point in my life. But I, you know, I, I was thinking about it some more as I was reading this over. And part of the concern that, that sort of has developed for me about that process is it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work for staff and for the members. And, you know, those are important conversations and conversations that we as a council should be having. But I would be a little bit concerned about burnout for, for both staff and frankly, the broader community. And my, my worry would be that if we did that, you know, after a few years, we might not have as many folks who would be interested in doing that much work. And so I think this is a good compromise. I think this does allow for that kind of process. And I, I think part of the reason I think that we had, we saw so much interest last year was because that process played out, because there were the meetings for folks to watch and the conversations had and, and questions that came from that process. So I think that is, that is still really, really valuable. And I, I think to that extent, you know, every other, every couple of years or so, I think kind of as a, a check-in or as, you know, hey, let's look at this and see what we, we think about that. I think that would be a good approach. To sort of the, the specific questions, you know, just off the top of my head, you know, I, I think if we're thinking for next year, you know, what issues would we like the task force to analyze and present recommendations on? I, I mean, I, I think frankly, the issue of public safety is top of mind for a lot of folks for a lot of different reasons. And I think next year would be a really, really good time to take a deeper dive into that specific aspect of the budget and talk about what we do, what we don't do, and, and, you know, where does, where do the tax dollars go that we, we spend on those things? And I think it'd be really helpful to, to have that conversation as a community. The other thought, again, this is just off the top of my head. I have not talked to anyone else about this. But, you know, having adopted our park system master plan, I think parks and recreation would be an, an interesting topic to look at as well. How many members? I think we need to keep it small. I, you know, nine was a, a workable number for the committee last year, but that's about as big as I think I would like to see it. And I think ideally five or seven. As I think it was Councilmember Beloga pointed this out when we first discussed the, the budget advisory committee. You want an odd number of votes so that there don't have to be any tiebreakers or anything like that. As far as a council liaison, the thought I would have frankly is that if, if we have a council liaison as, at all, that that person would serve as sort of an ex officio member, someone to just sort of be there and, and participate in the conversation, but wouldn't necessarily cast a vote. And then related to the last question, that person could potentially serve as a chair as well in that sort of impartial way. And then as far as, you know, who would select the committee members? I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit wary of putting that decision before the entire council. I, I think in terms of moving this forward, moving it forward quickly, but also just, you know, making sure we have a, a broadly representative group. I, it, it may, it may make more sense for, to do what we did with the budget advisory committee and have the mayor make the appointments and the council. I don't know if we confirmed them per se, but that, you know, the council weighs in in, in, in that way. I think that just makes a lot of sense in terms of what we're looking at and the, the kind of experience that we want represented. So those are, those are my thoughts. Overall, I, I think this is a good recommendation. And I, I want to be mindful of not putting too much on staff and, and on the community. But, you know, again, I think that process was just so, so valuable in, in moving the conversation forward. And I'd like to see us find a way to try and replicate that piece of it as best we can.
So speaking of replication, I'm actually back a couple of slides. The slide of every year community budget engagement. And like ideas or thoughts or feedback on the notion of, in addition to what we've talked about here, when we had our, when we had our town halls, the places were full. And now granted, it was a different time. I mean, it, there wasn't a worldwide pandemic. And I think they were very, very well advertised. And it was kind of different that it hadn't happened in a while. But I wonder if in our every year community budget engagement, that we have a series of town halls allow, as I think Councilmember Beloga has said on a number of occasions, allow for much more public input and back and forth or at least discussion questions, that kind of thing. But to, to frame them as a, as a town hall, to, to talk specifically budget, to, to get into it in that way, spread them across the city, however many we would like to do. Because I think they worked and I think they would be well-received again. I mean, I could be wrong, you know, as I said, it was a couple of years ago now and things have changed significantly. But I think that would be one thing we would want to consider in, in terms of our every year budget engagement. I know it's, it could be a lot, but I think it's worthwhile. It is, it's time well-spent, I think. And so then in your, the notion of the, the task force, I do think it's a good idea. It doesn't, it would be great if we could do it every year, but I just don't think that's feasible just from a work, a work plan standpoint. But I think to do this occasionally and to try and find a specific issue or to do a check-in, even if there isn't a, you know, a burning issue that needs to be grappled with, a, a check-in on a specific, whether it's public safety or public works or parking wreck, however we want to do it, I think it makes sense. And it, it would be an effective and worthwhile thing to do. Other thoughts on this? All right, well, not hearing anybody jumping up and down here. I do think where we are here. What, were you looking for specifics here? Were you looking for just this level of information that we've provided? Were you looking for, especially with the first bullet point, you know, for what issue would we want to do?
So yes, Mayor, it sounds like you are interested in doing a, like trying a task force for the next year budget, like just trying this process and incorporating your ideas also for the community engagement. And so if that's the case, we would start the process of getting members for that. And I think the first thing would be what would we, what would you want them to focus in on? So I think you've mentioned public safety, like police or fire or parks and recreation or park master plan assessment process.
So one thing maybe to consider, and again, I don't know how, how this all works, but considering the, the larger, big picture discussion that we need to have with our fire department, perhaps that might be the thing to focus on this year. We, we've got a lot of big decisions. We've got a big discussion that we need to have. Perhaps this task force can frame up the issue for a larger community discussion on this. Would, would that make sense? So how about if we do that? How about if we kind of push that to the, to the forefront? Members of the C-BAC, five or seven or? We've got seven council members. How about seven, seven members of this? How about that? I think there probably should be a council liaison. I'm open to whoever would like to select it. I think we could do it as a council. That would probably work.
Same, Mayor. I don't want to speak out of turn here. I want, had another set of comments here if, if we had a round robin. I, I wonder if it makes some sense that if the, the mayor would serve as that liaison to that, just, just given your, your role and your purview kind of across the city. I wonder if it does make some sense to have the mayor serve as that liaison. And then, you know, you've got the ability, you know, to, you know, you convene this meeting and kind of open it up for, for folks to be able to have that. So that's just, just one council member's perspective in terms of, of that. Or the co-chair piece is also an interesting thing to, to me as well. But, but that's just sort of one person snaking around that. And I sort of get into the details, but.
No, I think, I, I think everything's on the table. We're kind of creating this and looking for best ideas and best options for this. So that would be a possibility. And, and I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. We could certainly do that. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to get your mic up there.
Yeah. So I'm just kind of processing all of this and just the comments that my colleagues have made. And I guess my, probably my biggest concern is just the learning curve and our expectation for people serving on this task force in terms of understanding the whole, kind of the broader context of the specific budget item. And I wouldn't, I would guess I would just be concerned that we are, if we aren't, if they're not getting that kind of deep dive in the overall budget and how this one piece fits into it, that we may not be setting that committee up for success. If that makes sense. I, I mean, we saw what a learning curve it was. And those were people who had experience with city budgets and city financing last year. And I would actually argue that last year, that kind of was a task force, right? We had a very specific goal, a very specific need, and they fulfilled their purpose and then they were done. And that's what my understanding is, is what we'd be, we'd be. And that's what my understanding is, is what we'd be, we'd be doing a very similar process again, but without kind of that deep dive and they wouldn't be looking at the entire budget. So again, my concern I guess is the learning curve. And I just, you know, if we have different people from year to year participating, I just, I think it's a really heavy lift. And again, my concern would be that they don't have, they may not have all the information as they're looking at the broader context. And so then the recommendation coming to council, you know, it, we may have to interpret it differently and I wouldn't want them to feel like their recommendation wasn't valued. So again, just processing out loud, if we do move forward with this, one of the things, I, I echo Councilmember Lowman's desire to kind of talk more about our assessment process for our streets, but I would add in sidewalks, because we've talked a lot about how sidewalks are funded and, you know, if we were to look at an approach kind of like a Dyna is doing or, and I don't know the details of that, so I don't want to say that's the, you know, that's what I'm recommending, recommending, but is that a way that we could then more sustainably also fund some of our other infrastructure like sidewalks? So those are my comments now. I can, I can answer the specific questions too if you'd like, but I, I can pause there too.
So Mayor, councilmembers, we could bring back a resolution to, to form a task force for, for next year with some guidelines, you know, laid out. And we could also, I'm sure the city manager could provide some information or we can gather information just to kind of hone in on some of these questions and what you'd like us to do. But ideally, if we want to go forward with this, I think we want to start pretty soon to get it going so that we could start right away in January.
How about if based on the information you, you've heard tonight and some of the recommendations, you do just that, you kind of put the process together?
Okay.
And think about that, maybe put a resolution together. And then perhaps to have the, have, have staff consider the couple of different options that have been brought up here. What makes the most sense in terms of, what, what can people get their heads around in three months' time? What can, what, what issues are we hoping to accomplish? What would be most helpful in the budget process and ultimately back to the, to the council? And maybe make a recommendation in terms of what we've talked about or, or if there's any others. You've heard a couple, three recommendations here from the council. Maybe there's something else that the staff is thinking that would make more sense. So if you could do that, if you could put the structure up and maybe give us some things to chew on in terms of the different issues that we'd consider and bring it back and we could talk about it one more time and then move forward. How about that? Makes sense?
That sounds good.
Councilmember Nelson, a question?
Just a comment if I could quick, Mayor.
Please.
So yeah, appreciate the conversation here. And I like your idea of the town halls, going back to that, when it's an appropriate time to do that, I thought those brought people out and the opportunity to connect and hear from people I think is important. I gotta be honest, with regards to the task force, I kind of feel like we had an amazing process last year because of a very specific situation and now we're just trying to force a reason to have a task force going forward. And I mean, when I look at the issues that we're talking about, you know, public safety, you got the police side, you know, I'm very interested in hearing from our police leadership what recommendations they have within the budget process to address crime within our community. We know that we have a very serious issue with the fire department in terms of facilities and changes that we're, we're very likely to have to make. I'm just not sure there's like a ton of people in the community that are fully informed on how to address that versus getting that input from the staff. And ultimately, I really think that budget decisions are a huge part of council. That's why we're here. We are the budget committee at the end of the day. We ultimately are responsible for that, for better or for worse. And I, I just, I don't want to try to force something in there. If there's a specific issue that we need a task force for, we can set that up anytime. I, I just honestly, I think we're kind of searching for something to do here as opposed to, you know, taking and addressing those issues with the professionals that work in those departments and, and absolutely 100% agree with getting community input down there. I think that part completely makes sense to do with more engagement, to try to look back at those town halls, to find ways to bring people out. But I'm just a little uncomfortable with this task force process at this point.
Good perspective, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would echo, I guess I would echo Councilmember Nelson's sentiments. And I said that last time, you know, we were in our meeting, that I, I feel like this is one of our core responsibilities as elected officials. And I do agree that we could set up a task force around specific issues if we feel like that's a need. And I think as we talk about town halls, you know, I think it'd be cool to have city staff there tabling, right? Giving people information around our city budget, like those kinds of engagement processes. And one of the things that you had said was, you talked a little bit about how you were more successful in the community engagement when you met people where they were at, like at the farmer's market. And so in addition to having the pre-recorded sessions posted on the website, I think that's super helpful, especially for people who aren't necessarily able to get out to different events, finding those, those opportunities where there's already events or people are already gathering and, and offering to, to have a table there to talk with people. So just one last thought about that.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with the majority of what has been said and with respect to having the Community Budget Advisory Task Force, last year was, I think, an anomaly because you went out and hand shows that group of nine people. And if you look at the nine people that were selected, many of them had prior city service and otherwise were very engaged in the city. So I, I don't think that you can expect the same kind of results and participation out of nine, seven, five, whatever the number is, other people who do not have the basic experience, knowledge backgrounds that we had for the prior Budget Advisory Commission. And just the process of educating those people, I think can be overwhelming to a lot of people. And I'm, I think that Councilmember Carter said it quite eloquently, that what you need is, is a specific set of expectations, because otherwise I think you're setting this group up for failure unless you have a very narrow and limited window of items that they are to address. And not to have them continue on, as Councilmember Lowman said, just replicates the issue because of the knowledge and experience that you gain after that first year going through process. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we're kind of teetering right in, kind of in the middle here, whether this makes sense to go forward with or if, if we want to perhaps continue to kind of put this on hold until we actually have a specific issue that we would like a, a task force maybe to work on. Councilmember Lowman?
You know, I think, you know, I think the, the points that were just raised were all very good ones. I, I noticed as I looked down here that another councilmember is missing and I'd be interested to see what, what Councilmember Martin has to say on this topic. And I, I, I do like your idea of these town halls. And I, I just wonder, you know, in terms of, you know, I think there are certain things that a task force could help us with. So for example, I think, you know, you look at assessments and sidewalks as Councilmember Carter brought forward, that's something I think that there is a great deal of interest with that. And so I wonder if there would be, and we don't necessarily have to call it what, what this is here, but I wonder if we as a council would have a better understanding of, of the topic and how it impacts, how it impacts a greater number of folks by having a, a task force that may have some understanding of this and may be able to help us dive into as we get ready to do those town hall engagement pieces. And so maybe it's not so much that we go out, go at this specifically in terms of having them help us make that decision, but they're a, a piece or a component of that discussion. So that's when I look at the assessment piece and I, you know, I hear folks coming to the, you know, the podium tonight saying, hey, you know, I'd be interested in having a conversation about that and being a part of that. I'd be interested to see how, what they would bring back as a part of that task force. And I think that's a good catalyst for having that conversation. Now, there may not be other things where there is that interest level there, but I, I do think we've got some things here that, that could be, if it's, if it's woven into that, that town hall piece, I'm not sure if that makes sense what I'm saying here, Mayor, but the fact that Councilmember Martin's not here, I just wonder if, if folks would think differently if we looked at it that way as opposed to it's being a, they're, they're doing a budget decision for us.
No, I, I think that does make sense. And if I'm hearing what you're saying, you're, you're framing this a little bit more toward a, a community policy advisory task force. You know, it's, it's, it's more of a policy issue as opposed to a specific budget monetary task force. And I know that, that line is fine, I get that. But, but to talk about, you know, talking about things about the assessment policy, how it all works, yes, it's a budget issue, but it's, it's a policy issue also, how, how it all kind of fits together. So I mean, maybe it's a, it's just a, a different way of looking at it. It doesn't burden them with the, the entirety of the city budget and trying to figure out and understand all of that in a short period of time. It's a matter of taking a deep dive into a, into a specific policy area. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Something else I've been thinking about through this conversation related to this is I do think as we identify now kind of what we're talking about, policy issues, I mean, we have numerous boards and commissions already in place. So like when the Parks Master Plan was brought up, I, I mean, I thought to myself, well, we have the park board, you know? And I, I assume that they would want to be involved in those, you know? So I just, I also just want to kind of add that layer in of considering the bodies that we already have formed that could be helpful in digging into a policy discussions. But I, but I do agree for certain issues that it would make sense.
Councilmember Colter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and just, I guess just what kind of one final thought here, and, and that is that, you know, as I've gone out and I've had conversations with, with folks in the community, you know, I, I think part of the reason that the process that we had, I mean, there were a lot of reasons, I should say, that the process we had last year was so successful. You know, we did of course have folks with, with the knowledge and the experience to sort through the issues relatively quickly, for the most part, some, not all. But I, I think the reason that it had the meaning, at least that it appears to me that it did, within the community was because folks were involved in that decision-making process. And, you know, yeah, the town halls were, were valuable, we should do them again. But one of the more frequent, I don't know, I wouldn't use the word criticism, but one of the more frequent concerns that I hear from folks is, okay, so we go to these town hall meetings or we speak at public comment or we, you know, we do whatever it is we do, where does that, you know, how does that end up factoring into the decision-making process? And I think this is a concrete way for us to say, this is a, this is how the public will actively participate, will help formulate these decisions that are made. And I, you know, in my experience, folks are looking for more opportunities like that, not fewer. And, you know, yes, it, it can be oriented around a specific issue, it shouldn't be oriented around the entire budget. That's, that's too much for, for the kind of process we're looking at here. But, you know, I, I mean, looking at this, this IAP two, the, the spectrum of engagement here, you know, I, I mean, folks want to feel involved and they, they want to know that what, that their involvement means something, both in terms of how it's incorporated ultimately into decisions, but also in how those decisions are made. And yes, of course, we are the city council, we are elected to make budget decisions. But, you know, I, I mean, I, you know, I, I just think it, 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 this is the kind of thing that it's really, really valuable to bring folks who don't normally sit in these meetings into the process on, is to have these conversations. Because when I'm out at the doors, this is the thing that folks ask me about. They want to talk about property taxes, they want to talk about where their tax dollars are going, what it's being spent on and that kind of thing. And this is an opportunity for us to say to the community, if you say you care about these things, if you say you want to be involved on these things, you know, let's talk about it, let's find a way to do that. And I, I, I just don't want us to pass this up because, you know, we, we feel like this would, that we would be, you know, somehow abdicating our duty or that we would be doing something that, that, that would, that, I, I don't know, I'm not, that was a half-warm thought there, but I, it, it just seems to me like this is a, a conversation that folks want to have. And I think we saw that with, with the engagement, with the, the, with everything that we saw last year. And I, I just really think this is something that we, we could bring to the community, and that folks would be interested in if they feel like they're participating in a concrete way, if they feel like what they're doing is going to make a difference in the final product. And that's, that's the piece we need to be mindful about is, you know, I, you know, folks will go to presentations and they will listen, some folks will do that, but it, it's just a different level of value, a different level of, frankly, a, a different feeling of belonging, of feeling like we are a part of the process if folks are actually involved in a concrete way. And I, I, I don't want us to forget that, I don't want us to lose that moving forward because that was so, so valuable last year.
So you're clearing the direction now?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we'll, we'll talk and get some information together and bring something back for you to sign on.
If you could, and I think, I mean, you've heard a lot here and I think there's, you, you hear there's different perspectives and different ideas as to what direction to go and what direction to take it. I think we could continue to sit and chew on this for a while here, but maybe the, the best thing to do would be to, you know, go and ruminate. We've got a, a proposal in front of us, we've had a good discussion here, maybe we bring this back again at, at another meeting and, and continue this conversation and see where we end up. Because right now, I don't think we've ended up anywhere. I think we're all kind of at different parts of this, so I think that might be the, the tact to take here at this point, if everybody's okay with that. All right?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will, we do have our special budget meeting on November 22nd, so maybe that might be the time to, to come back to this.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second item under organizational business is item 8.2, which is an update on our I-494 project and to talk a bit about municipal consent on that project.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I've been before you about a dozen times since we started the study for the 494 project back in 2018. So tonight is pretty exciting because we're actually bringing forward, or MINDOT has, has brought forward the first build project for the 494. So tonight's meeting is basically an update on the municipal consent process and the municipal layout, consent layout that has been prepared and provided to the city from MINDOT. The reason for municipal consent process is that this project does include freeway expansion as well as right-of-way acquisition. And so as part of that process, MINDOT submits the layout to the city for review and approval. And eventually, we will be coming back with a resolution of support for the council to hopefully approve. But most important of note is that next Monday night on the 15th is the public hearing for the public to have an opportunity to comment to the council on that proposed layout. So tonight, Amber Blanchard from MINDOT is going to be presenting an update on the, the project and going through the layout and the, some of the specific details on the right-of-way needs.
Thank you, Ms. Merle. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me and pleasure being here. All right. All right. I, oh, thank you. I was like, how do I do this? All right. Fantastic. Sounds good. Thank you. All right, I'm going to talk about the first construction project that MINDOT is bringing forward to the city of Bloomington. You can see it on the screen here that the first construction project includes EZ Pass addition between Highway 100 and 35W. It also includes the replacement of Nicollet, Portland, and 12th Avenue bridges, as well as a brand-new pedestrian and bicycle structure that goes over 494 roughly at about Chicago Avenue. And we also have numerous retaining walls, noise walls, everything that a major reconstruction of an interstate highway could bring. Next slide. So Amy had already mentioned that we have the municipal consent layout. We'll go through, I'll go through some just areas of interest perhaps to the city of Bloomington. I do want to point out that the layout does include information on construction features such as roadway reconstruction, sidewalks, trails, bridges. It also does include right-of-way needs on there as well, and you'll see that in green as I highlight in the slides here coming up. So Amy also mentioned the reason I'm here talking about municipal consent. It really provides the municipalities an opportunity to comment and approve a project layout before we go ahead and get through to the build phase. And it does apply to projects that change access, increase or reduce highway traffic capacity, or requires acquisition of permanent rights of way, and that is in Minnesota state statute. And so for 494, we have all of the above. We have access changes, we have capacity changes, and we also are asking for right-of-way. So I'm going to begin, of course, EZ Pass, I had already mentioned before, so that is our mainline capacity expansion. So a few areas where we have capacity expansion are just starting about east, just east of Highway 100. That is where most of the expansion for Minpass will, or excuse me, EZ Pass, I've been trying to make sure I don't do that, but of course, it slips every once in a while. For EZ Pass, to accommodate the lanes in the middle, we will be widening to the outside. And then you also see more mainline capacity expansion between Xerxes and Penn. Also, mainline capacity expansion at the 35W 494 interchange, and that is part of the turbine interchange that we will be modifying for access, safety, and congestion improvements as well. And then in terms of access changes, there will be access changes between Portland, Nicollet, and 12th. Those access changes will remove access at Nicollet and Portland, and those will become just straight local overpass bridges over 494. And then the Portland Avenue will become a full access interchange to and from 494 as well. The right-of-way needs, starting back near Highway 100, the right-of-way needs are what you see in green here. Because we will be expanding to the north and the south, the freeway there, we will be needing some right-of-way on the south side and a little bit on the north side. So you can move on. At Penn Avenue, we will have some right-of-way needs on the north side, north and east of Penn Avenue. This is to accommodate the change in access that we have for building new bridges, we call them braid bridges. As a matter of fact, just on the east side there, on the westbound and the eastbound side of Penn. And those access, the one you see on the south side there, the access is for an existing lift station that we will need to have access from the interstate itself, from the ramp. And then the one on the north side is to accommodate the lanes coming from the northbound 35W to westbound 494 movement that will be associated with the turbine interchange. Here you see there are right-of-way needs that are needed at 82nd and Penn. We are putting in a, an additional left turn lane coming southbound on Penn Avenue to 82nd, and that is because of the forecast increase in volumes in 2040 that we are going to be seeing, or at least are forecasting, forecasting to see, associated with the change in access at Penn. And so in order to put all of that in and redo this intersection so that we can fit that left turn lane, we do need a little bit of right-of-way on the west side and the east side. And then we also need right-of-way, like Ed mentioned, just a little bit more construction-type temporary easements for right-of-way surrounding the turbine interchange. And we also will need some permanent right-of-way at 82nd on the northeast side to, again, accommodate that expansion of the new northbound to westbound 494 directional ramp that is associated with that turbine interchange. Here is Lyndale and American. We're making some minor adjustments here to lengthen a right-turn lane, given the traffic volumes that are going to be turning right in this area that we're forecasting. And then here at Nicollet and 494, and then you see also at American, there's some small amounts of driveway and frontage road improvements and changes that we're making as well. And then here is at Portland Avenue, you see a lot of right-of-way on the east and west sides of Portland Avenue to accommodate the expansion of Portland Avenue itself due to the increase in volume that we are forecasting based on the change in access. And then also, we have some right-of-way needs there just north of Walmart to facilitate access to and from businesses that are located on that frontage roadside. So we have a list of other further investigations that we're working on. Community outreach has been a goal of ours from the very beginning. Andrew Lataia, the project manager, has been working on this long before I got on the project, and we will continue and are continuing on our community outreach. So engagement is ongoing. We've had numerous things that we've been engaging with the public on and are continuing our work on that. Local traffic impacts, there is numerous ones, permanent ones that we are making, as I had just shown in the slides, as well as we are taking a look at the local traffic impacts during construction, which is ongoing right now as we're right in the middle of that process. The visual quality manual and context-sensitive solutions, that process is getting started, and we have a consultant onboard that is helping us to finalize that and get our contact solutions framework plan developed. And so there will be more coming up on that in the coming months as our goal is to get that done by March. So in the next slides, I'm going to go through a few other items that we're investigating, such as preliminary noise wall locations. In Bloomington, there is one on the south side that is feasible, and this noise wall is feasible at a 20-foot height. And this is located at, on the south side of 494, roughly between East Bush Lake Road and Highway 100. And we do go through a noise wall process, a voting process. First, we determine with modeling if it's even feasible to begin with and what heights. And then we will go out to the voting, do the voting process with those people that are affected by the noise in those areas, specific areas by the noise walls. All right, so here I'm going to just kind of run through our preliminary concept for construction staging, and I'll do this at a very high level. It's really still being looked at. It is a design-build project, so I will say there are many different ways to do the construction staging throughout the project. We will have requirements that the contractor will have to follow as part of the design-build contract. So this is just one idea, but right now, in 2023, when we begin the project and get the design-build contractor onboard, we do need to get the design done because that is, of course, part of design-build. And then most of that first year is finishing the design, working on the design, and also doing some minor temporary construction, removing vegetation, getting it ready for the major construction in the following year, those types of instances. In 2024, we'll have the design complete, and then we'll be constructing on the eastbound side, so everything you see in green would be permanent construction, and everything you see in orange would be temporary construction. So we have construction taking place on eastbound on the outsides, westbound on the outsides. We also have Penn Avenue ramps and 35W north ramps being constructed. The 35W directional ramp is being constructed as well at the turbine interchange, and then the pedestrian bridge at Chicago is one of the first that gets constructed as In 2025, construction takes place on the 494 kind of median areas in the center. We also have construction on the eastbound half of the 35W and 494 bridge, and that's the turbine interchange as well. You'll also see that we're utilizing, or at least one of our ideas is to utilize the bridge over 35W that accommodates that directional ramp as a temporary way to get across 35W heading westbound. So that will be utilized for a couple of construction seasons here. We're also working on that south half of the 494 35W ramps, and then the Portland Avenue Bridge as well will be under construction since we have finished by now the pedestrian In 2026, which is the last year of construction that we're anticipating, the 494 westbound widening will take place as well as completion of the remaining roadway segments. 494 westbound half of the 35W and 494 bridge will be under construction in the turbine interchange. They will, the contractor has the opportunity to utilize that westbound traffic bypass I talked about before if needed. And then the work at 82nd and 35W would be worked on in this timeframe, and that we're looking at maybe moving up in the timeframe a little bit too, so it might need to go or could possibly go in '25, not necessarily '26. So there is some flexibility there. And then the Nicollet Avenue and 12th Avenue bridges would be reconstructed and constructed in this timeframe, and we are looking to be done in October of 2026. So the current estimate for cost participation for the city of Bloomington is estimated to be around $1 million. We have bridge reconstruction at about $200,000. We have sidewalks and trails at about $165,000. Lighting is $175,000. Signal replacement is estimated to be $230,000, and contingency and engineering are roughly about $230,000 as well. We are still exploring a few items related to local drainage, utility relocations that the city may want to include in the construction, and any visual quality or aesthetics items that are over and above the MINDOT budget that we set for those items. I also do want to point out that the infra grant that the federal government awarded the MINDOT project here did cover an awful lot of the cost participation items that the city would have had to do had we not gotten that award of that grant. So, very good there. For the next steps, like I mentioned, construction we're planning to begin in the summer, or roughly in sometime in 2023, and finish in October 2026. We do have ongoing outreach, like I mentioned before, we have the noise wall and the aesthetics recommendations that are coming. And then we also have numerous funding sources for this. You can see here that the first project costs are here. Construction, our budget is $320 million, and that is funded by quarters of commerce, local, state, and federal funds will be used for that. We also have budget for utility relocations at roughly $27 million. Change orders we're forecasting to be around $7 million. Design is ongoing, and Andrew and I have been working on that for a few years now, and that is budgeted at around $27 million. And then we have the right-of-way costs are budgeted for roughly $38 million. And so that total for first project, total project cost is $417. So again, you can find more information at our website, MINDOT's project website, as well as we do have an online open house that we have updated to reflect where we are currently, and that is at 494openhouse.com. So I would be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you very much. That's a lot of information, and I know there's a lot of moving parts to all of this, so I appreciate you bringing it all together for this. Council questions on this? So the, you had mentioned, Amy, that next week this is coming back to the council. Is that correct? And is this our, is this the municipal consent public hearing next week? Is that what we're talking about for next week?
Yep, Mayor Bussie and Council, yep, next Monday night, we will be hosting the public hearing for the municipal consent process.
And is the council voting on it that evening as well, or is it just a public hearing?
I will have that answer for you before you have your packet next week. We will be bringing back a resolution of support, but it will be, I mean, yeah, I'm going to figure out the details of the process. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
And where, how does this calendar all work for other communities that are, will be doing municipal consent, public hearing, and ultimate vote?
Mayor Bussie, the, the application for municipal consent was submitted to all of the cities at the same time, and there's basically, it's like a legislative calendar that identifies the timelines and the deadlines for, for all the responses. So within 60 days of the application or the submittal is when we have to have the official public hearing, and then we have an additional 90 days beyond that would be the deadline for the resolution of support and getting that submitted. My, my desire is that we will finish that process by the end of this year, but obviously, if there's a lot of additional discussion that needs to take place before the approval is done, we will have plenty of opportunity to work through details.
Very good. Thank you. Questions at all, Council? You wowed them. Well done.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you much. And that brings us, Council, to our final item on our agenda this evening, 8.3, our council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to kick us off on item 8.3 this evening?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I have no additional items tonight. Thank you.
Council, anything to add for item 8.3, our city council policy and issue update? I see Councilmember Colter and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to briefly, we'll be canvassing the results of the election on Wednesday, and so we can do it then too, but I did just want to say a brief note of thanks to our city clerk and her staff and all the election judges who served as volunteers this, this past weekend as we went through the first, our first go-around with ranked choice voting tabulations and all of that. It was incredibly well-done. It was just a wonderful process to see, everything was organized, everything was done professionally and efficiently, and just really, really well-done, even to the, to the point where our city clerk would rotate out election judges every 20 minutes to make sure that folks' eyes were fresh and that there weren't any of those mistakes because folks were getting tired. It was just, it was really, really wonderful to see, and everyone that I interacted with who witnessed the process felt the same way. So I just wanted to say a brief note of thanks for, for all of that. It was just very, very well-done work.
Couldn't agree more. You're here, they did a very nice job. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a quick question, probably for Jamie. Earlier today, we approved an item on our Earlier today, we approved an item on our consent agenda for homeland health specialists to help with some clinics between public health and the schools. And I'm just curious if we have any more information on when those clinics will start happening to help get kids in our community vaccinated.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Carter. I don't have the exact dates at my fingertips, but we'll certainly follow up with council and get those out. And we'll also make sure that those who are going to be potentially benefited by having those will, will have that information available as well. We'll make sure we communicate those.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got two items first, just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Coulter's comments about the ranked choice voting and our city clerk and the election judges and the great job that they did and let them have a little bit of rest. But at some point, it would be nice to get a report back in terms of how that process went, lessons learned, budget impacts of having those days of counting and tabulation, all of that type of stuff, just so we have kind of a, a check back on that. But certainly wouldn't expect that this evening. But at, at some point, would be nice to kind of hear if there's anything we need to look at there. Second item is, and I did give Chief Hartley a heads up about this, but it's my understanding that two of Bloomington police officers received Medal of Honors from the Bloomington, or not the Bloomington, the Minnesota Chief of Police Association, where I believe our former chief is the head of that organization. So who knows, maybe he had some help in that. But so, but I just, if Chief Hartley, if he's available, could kind of fill us in on, on what they were awarded for the event. And just, you know, for me personally, and hopefully from the, probably from the entire council, just our gratitude for their good work and congratulations on this award.
Chief Hartley?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson. Last August 2020, it was a busy night in Bloomington. And one of our officers was dispatched to a individual who was violating a protection order. And when he arrived on scene, he was met with an individual who was armed with a knife and was pleading to be shot and killed by the police. We trained all of our officers in de-escalation. And his actions over the next four minutes until backup from Richfield and also another BPD officer could get there were remarkable. And as much as I would like to say that Chief Potts had something to do with the issuing of this award, these officers earned it on their own accord. So through just really solid de-escalation, buying time allowed the other officers to arrive and less lethal was used. But the video is remarkable. And again, they did everything spot on. I don't need to remind people what this country looked like a year ago last summer and where we could have had an individual who have, that would have had a deadly force encounter with our police department. It worked out where this person was taken into custody. And I believe he was in crisis at the time and got the help that he needed. So really a proud moment last Monday night, or it was Tuesday when the award was given. And a proud moment for not only me as the interim chief, but also the city, the city should be proud as well. So thank you for asking, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, and I really appreciate that. And certainly didn't mean to diminish what they did there with, talking about former Chief Potts. But I, I think it's just a great representation of the training that they received, the professionalism that they exhibit to be able to de-escalate and to help someone that has obviously experienced a mental health crisis. And very happy to hear that, you know, that individual got some help coming out of that incident, which I think is the goal and all those things. So great job by sergeant and detective there and the entire department.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just mention a, several things, but I'll, I'll try to be brief here. And also folks have got some things to do here. Yeah, December 1st, if I understand it, is the, the deadline for the organics carts to be ordered through the city. And I wanted to conform that with the manager. And then I am starting to get some questions about the bills that folks are, are receiving for that cart. And I, I had a misunderstanding in terms of that. I, I always thought that, that if you order those, that cart, that that's when you'd get the fee as opposed to if you, if you didn't order it, you still got the fee. So if we could help kind of clarify that for, I don't know if it's city manager or, or, but what that looks like for residents so they're, they're not surprised come their, come their bills.
Mr. Keel, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman. I think the first question you had, having about the due date for when registration is required, I do not know that exact date. The, the date you're referring to is the first date to ensure that you have a cart by the beginning of service this spring. People can sign up at any point after that, but they may, their cart delivery may be somewhat delayed if they're not in by that first date, which presumably is December 1st. But I will check and then report back on the actual date. And on to your second question, it is true that everybody in the system will pay for organic collection, whether or not they have a cart delivered. So it's their choice to have a cart delivered and to participate. I think that's been the, pretty clear the, the full way through.
Thanks for, for clarifying that. And I maybe just had a misunderstanding of that, but that's good to clarify that. You know, you work on so many details, we had it many different ways, so, when we were talking about. So thanks for clarifying that for myself and for the general public. And you may not want to go too far, because I did want to highlight another item that we did pass earlier today, just in case you want to have any comment on it. But it was our 8.6, the acceptance of water efficiency grant funds from the Metropolitan Council related to the budget adjustment. And I think this is a great sense of praise for the city itself. We know that, that utilizing water in the, in the city of Bloomington is of important paramount. Using that efficiently is, is very important. And so the Metropolitan Council previously had granted $18,000 of its grant funds to the city for promoting water efficiency through irrigation system audits and rebates on irrigation controllers and sprinkler heads. And they have now wished to amend that agreement and to provide additional $3,000. And it will be matched by a $1,000 funds from the Sustainability Commission. And I just think that this work is so important. We talk about what we need to do around water across the country and really around the world. And, you know, it's timely because of what we're doing around sustainability in the, in the conferences that we're having from a worldwide perspective about really trying to meet our, our goals. And I just think that that's just one example of the many different aspects of what we're trying to do around sustainability and our continued, as a council, being committed to trying to make those, make those changes. So I'm not sure if there's any comment you want to make on that, or we could, we could move on.
Maybe just a short comment that the irrigation system reviews is part of the Sustainability Commission's work plan and has been for a number of years. The first grant funded a very successful program of those reviews. And when more money became available from the Met Council, they had recognized our success in that area and actually offered us the opportunity to kind of expand our work, which we are very happy to be able to do.
Well, thank you very much. And with today, Mayor, you had put forward a proclamation. And I want to thank you for the, for Bloomington veterans. And we'll get the opportunity later on this, this week to be able to celebrate that. But I also want to just take this shameful moment to, to just promote something that we've got going on here in Bloomington, which is BloomingtonVeteransMemorial.org. If you get a chance to go out there and have a look at that and donate to a project that we're working on to try to put a memorial here on the Bloomington campus here for our many men and women who have contributed to our society by giving up a little bit of their time or their sacrificing their lives for the service to this country. Freedom isn't, as, as the mayor had said earlier, and the proclamation is, is not free. I'm reminded of that when I think of the passing of former General Colin Powell over the, over the weekend. And just for, for me, as in terms of a public servant, I've kind of looked to, to him and some of his work as being really pivotable to our, our country in a, in a sense of bipartisanship. And I want to kind of then take that and turn to another public servant that we've had here in Bloomington. And I want to thank Jack Beloga, and now the, the election is over. Remember when I ran the very first time, he was on the, he was on the ballot with me. And it was kind of fun over these last several years to, to get to know you, Jack. And I consider you to be a friend. And I know that you've had the opportunity to serve our country. And I want to thank you for that, that service to the country, both in the military and also here at the city of Bloomington. Just for myself, I think you, you come to it with a lot of humility. You're a statesman, your, your commitment to discourse and making sure that all points of view are considered has been, I think, a helpful part of our ongoing conversation. And for, for this council member, you will certainly be missed after the new year. And I also want to thank for your commitment to sustainability. That's sort of the reason why I kind of set this up the way that I did to talk about to sustainability. I know you were there when we tried to get this thing going. And I want to just tell you how much I appreciate your, your commitment to that, that sustainability piece. And, and I, I think back to when I, watching the funeral of Colin Powell, or even as it was for my dad, when they, they took that flag and draped it over the coffin, I thought about the, the work that, that he did. And I think about the work that we all need to do. And we all are kind of gathered here around the flag. And we all are, you know, you've said it to me many a times, Jack. We're, we're certainly are all individuals, but we are all a part of a group that is a part of this country. And more times than not, we need to remember, as you have said so many times, that those things that bring us together are the things that our enemies fear the most. And I hope that we will continue as a council, even when you're not here, to be able to remember those things that bring us together rather than those things that, that separate us. So I want to just thank you again for your, your service here on the council and for your service to the country. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Yes, and I'll echo that, Councilmember Beloga, and we'll have plenty of opportunity, I think, as we get into December here, we'll have plenty of opportunities for, for, for thanks and, and calling out your, your great service to the city of Bloomington. So thank you so much. Counsel, is there anything else? If not, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening. Hearing no further, council discussion. Mr. Briller?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for tuning in today. Thank you to the staff for your work and for everybody who participated in this evening's meeting. Thanks much, have a good night.
Night, folks.